All right, we are ready, I believe, to start the meeting.
Good to go?
Yes.
Want to welcome everybody this evening to these unusual circumstances into the city council meeting on this Monday, August the 3rd, 2020, at approximately 7:06 PM. Ms. Derry, if you would call the row, please.
Yes. Rod Powell is absent. Ralph Maker.
Here.
Tim Terry.
Here.
Lance Terry.
I think I'm here.
Yes, you are. Daniel McDaniel.
Here.
A.C. Brown.
Here.
I believe that is everyone, and we do have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. I will, I will lead us tonight in prayer and followed by, if you have a flag there where you can see it, we'll, we'll stand and have a pledge of allegiance following the prayer led by Chief Will Dawson, if you'll join me in prayer for just a moment. Father God, we come to you tonight with open hearts and open minds. We ask, Father, that you be with us, Father, as we meet together to discuss the business of the city of Greenwood. We thank you for these leaders that are here. We thank you for the ability to communicate through this advanced technology. We just thank you for all the many blessings you've given us. Father, most of all, we thank you for your son that died on the cross, that we can believe in him and have eternal life. Be with us now as we go into this meeting, give us the sermon on the decisions that are before us, in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to a free, healthy, equal, honest, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a thirdty and justice.
Thank you. Please be seated. Again, thank you, guys and ladies, everybody. And tonight, and especially under these conditions, city, as we continue on, and let's get into the meeting. I would ask the council to, for approval of the minutes for the July 6th meeting, regular council meeting, and also the July 22nd special council meeting.
Make a motion for the minutes.
Second. You have a motion and a second to approve.
A.C., did you second that?
Ralph did.
Ralph, gotcha.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I'm gonna call for a voice vote now. Lance Terry.
Yes.
Lance Terry. Tim Terry.
Yes.
Ralph Maker.
Yes.
Daniel McDaniel. His microphone is off.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Moving on to the, we have no recognitions or acknowledgements this evening. We do have some that will be scheduled hopefully next month. We had to postpone those due to the type of meeting we're having tonight, so we'll do that next month. Committee reports, you have several, or most of those in your packet, I believe. As always, if you do not see one, we've got Sebastian County Boys and Girls Club, SRCA, Parks Commission, Water and Wastewater Commission. If there's any questions regarding those reports, please let me know or Danielle know in the, at the office, and we'll get those questions answered for you. On that, we'll move on to Citizen Forum. I failed. I don't know that we have anybody in the audience tonight, but I would remind everybody that's watching Facebook, that's called, if there's questions during the meeting. Charlotte.
What? Yes.
Is there, is there a phone number that you had posted for folks to call?
Yes, if they need to speak, they can call in 479-357-1125, and that is my business phone, and it is right here by me. If you have anything to add, you can just call that number.
Okay, let's do that.
Again, I will repeat it, 479-357-1125.
Okay, thank you. We encourage you, as you're watching, if you have any questions.
Being spotty here.
Okay. Also, to let everybody know that the City Hall is actually open, so the, the council room is open. We're doing this from all over the city. Everybody's basically at home for the most part, but a few of us are here, but the, the council room is open. If somebody wanted to show up at City Hall and speak tonight, they can do that right there at the, at the podium. So, moving on to the financial report, Mr. Tom Marsh.
Okay, I'm gonna be showing something on the, you can hear me if I presume. I'm gonna be showing something from the COVID-19. It also incorporates the financials, so I'm gonna flip the phone around so you can see my computer screen. I don't know if you can follow this.
Yes, it looks good.
Okay. The first thing I wanted to point out was the fact that we had a, an incredible month from the city sales and use tax perspective. Our month over month from 2020 versus 2019, July, was up 24.3%. And you see the big increase right here, going up 24.3. This was in your packet. I do want to point out that our cumulative growth for the seven-month period this year is 14.8%. As a comparative, for 2019, we were at 1.5% last year at this same time. So, in looking at it from the perspective of where we are, which is this purple line on an average, compared to our budget, which is the blue line on average, that is a 14% increase. So, if we were to end the year on our path of growth of about normal 3.5%, what we would have to do, as you can see here, is literally income, incur about a 12% reduction. And I will show you that in this graph or this scheme. It shows a 12% reduction still yields us a 3.44% increase for the year. That's on par with what we normally do, even though we budget zero growth. So, the city, city sales and use tax-wise is faring very well. As you can see, we went from 6.8, 14.3 month over months, year, six, different year, rather, comparative, 16.3 to 22 to 24.3. Now, will that continue? I can't say it's gonna continue as robust as that, but I don't believe that we're gonna end up in, incurring an average decline of 12% per month for the next five months. So, everything indicates a positive outcome for the year, even if we do end up just at our normal 3.5%. So, some of the departments are starting to go ahead and implement projects that were temporarily put on hold until we could see what the city sales and use taxes are doing, and I will demonstrate that in a little bit. I do want to show you now the county. County sales tax incurred a month-over-month increase of 10%, which is that huge spike there. A lot of that was incurred as a result of the city's growth and city sales and use tax. The spending in the city also helped the county. And you're looking at a, what turns out to be a 10.1% for the month, but a 3.2% cumulative. So, compare that to 2019, where we had a 1.2% cumulative at this point. We're actually faring quite well county-wise. So, when I look at the numbers, and I kinda put it into my projections, I project that if we were to decline over the next five months at four, an average of 4.35%, which we haven't hit at all this year, you're looking at us breaking even or meeting budget. We're not, we're not at a real growth, but we didn't lose anything off of our, our budget. So, all the departments are still within their budget's revenue streams. So, that's actually good. 3.2 for 2020 cumulative at this point versus 1.2 last year. And we ended up slightly under 1% for the growth last year, so this year is almost three times the growth at this point, or two times at this point that we, than we've had in the previous year. When you look at each department's spread, that minimal $423, as you can see how it breaks out by department. And like I said, I'm not as optimistic about the county sales tax maintaining a growth level that we currently are, but I don't see it dropping below our budget level for the rest of the year. It would have to take a major decline for that to happen. I did start showing the advertising and promotion tax collections, because these collections are actually more real-time. They're not a two-month lag. They're, the amount of money that we collected in July was actually June's. So, what I did point out last month was that during the COVID period, this is March, April, May, and June, last month, I told you that this 17,531 that we brought in was not gonna sustain, because Fort Smith opened their restaurants, and a lot of people were going elsewhere, and they weren't just relying on our fast food that was happening. So, I kinda predicted a decline, said it wouldn't, wouldn't hold that level, and it hadn't, but it just dropped back to the March levels right now. I will let you know that every one of the representative sample in businesses dropped, with the exception of one for the month of June over May. But if you'll notice, the green line there is an average of $12,160 per month for AMP, and that $12,000 is, we're still about 2,000 over that. The increase that we're experiencing in AMP right now is about 12%. Now, I, I don't anticipate it staying there. I think it might end up somewhere maybe 6% to 9% range, but right now, it's looking fairly well. It fared well during the shutdowns and the close time, the, when the, they were adapting to the unusual circumstance and unusual period. I'll also let you know that there's the graph. You can't really see a lot of those numbers, but I can tell you that just on my representative sample, we're at a 6.93% increase, and that includes, that's the total period of March, April, May, and June. If you take that average versus the previous average going into the COVID period, we are a 6.93% increase. So, that's why I'm saying, if this is a representative sample, I believe that that's where we'll probably end up for the year, somewhere in that 6% to 7% to 9%, given circumstances as they exist today. I do want to point out that, in looking at some of the things that I've had to put together for the bond issue, I wanted to look at our revenue comparisons between January and July of 19, and January and July of 20, and look at some of the variances. The first thing you'll notice is municipal court distributions dropped 33% in that same seven-month period this year versus last. You'll also notice that the turnbacks, they're faring pretty well. The state turnback of 5.8% gain is actually more general than it is street. One of the things that's listed down here in other revenues is the pavilion deposit fees, the rental fees. They're down 60.98% due to all the cancellations. There was a lot of bookings, but there's been a, a lot of cancellations that had to have been refunded, so the revenue is lagging majorly behind. Accident reports are down, the animal registration's down, the purchasing card rebate is down, and it's down primarily because purchasing was down, as we put a slowdown on the actual spends. You'll also notice that the property tax is down about 8.54% as people are waiting in order to pay their property taxes. They still have until October to do that, so I'm anticipating that a lot of that would be, will start picking up as the months go on, and we have seen a little bit of an uptick just in the last month. Then you look at the water systems revenues, the water tap fees, sewer tap fees, those are up primarily due to a development project, and as you'll see here, the city sales and use tax is up 14, county is up 3, and the AMP is up 12.87%. So, all in all, our revenue stream is up 5%, even given this amount of time, just it's spread between the, the robust county and city sales tax versus some of the other revenue streamlines that are not faring as well. But like I said, the city's overall revenue is up 5.9%. That's encompassing all departments, all revenue. And then the comparative for revenue versus expense, I have the three-year period. This is 2018, 2019, and 2020, and you'll see 2019's income or surplus over 2018 grew at about 5.8% for the seven-month period. Right now, we're down 1.5% in growth, but we still have surplus of $1.1 million right now for the seven months. So, the financials are looking strong, very strong, and that's caused cash flow. And the reason I brought that out, I don't know if I'm gonna zoom in here, you'll be able to see it, but the cash flow statement showed a net increase or decrease in cash. It showed a decrease of 247,518, when previous April, May, and June, we hoarded almost $600,000. So, we started spending in July, freeing up some of their projects that were on hold, and that's why that cash flow decreased so dramatically. So, our, right now, surplus or net increase in cash is only 322,000, and I say only because we had ballooned that up to about $600,000. Gallons of water sold increased, so our total decline, which was at 1.14% for the two-year period, is now only 4.53% for the two-and-a-half-year period, and our decline from year, this year versus last is only a 0.66%. So, the water sales are strong. The water past due AR trend, you'll see a decline in the month of June, and that's indicative of people actually now having to pay their bills or incur a past due or shut-offs. So, they started heating it, and we started collecting. The actual amount of past due accounts also dropped. And then the growth of water over a two-and-a-half-year period is 3.22%. That's the number of water accounts the city has established, and these are the sewer accounts, growing at 2.79% in a two-and-a-half-year period. So, that's, that's the financials as far as I wanted to present to you. Is there any questions? Or are there?
Well, Tom, you said that the county sales tax, you know, its spike was kind of a result of, of our spike?
We have a lot to do with that. There's not very many cities that had a 24.5% increase in city sales and use tax. And when you go in and purchasing, you're actually, you're actually contributing to both, because the county sales tax is a pooled amount. So, because they pay the county tax, and it's pooled from Greenwood, Greenwood's major spike helps the county, so all other cities benefited from our 24% increase. That's one way of looking at it.
Okay.
I talked to the city of Barling, and they, they had a little bit of an increase in counting, but mostly, it wasn't because of their city sales and use tax. It was primarily because we did so well.
And Fort Smith opened up a little bit too, also, right during that month or before that.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, great.
Any other questions or comments on the finance? Thank you, Tom, as always. Great job. With Tom, we refer to Tom's crystal ball quite often around here, and he's obviously got a pretty good one, so, and, and proud of our city. I mean, that's, that's, that's really a good place to be in, especially during this crazy time, so, thank you, Tom. Next item on the agenda is agenda additions. We do need to add one. We'll call it number six, and we'll, I'll do something a little different down when we get down there, but number six, we need to add, I believe we've got it listed as amend to the 2020 water wastewater, water wastewater budget, that, now you have it down.
Go ahead and read, resolution amending budget for water O and M for retiring out of city tap rights.
Okay, that'll be number six. And with that, we will move on to old business. First item on the, or number one on that is the amending ordinance number 18-03, regulating the operation of mobile food vendors. This is the second reading. Remember, this is, have it there in your packet. We've, I believe, it's highlighted what we've added, and then, well, we didn't really, and we scrapped, we took, actually, basically took more out than we did anything. We discussed it last time, too, so, any questions on that ordinance? Take a minute to refresh your memory on that one. I believe H, letter H, was what we, is that, that's the biggest change, all right, Charlotte?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve this ordinance with second reading by title order.
Okay.
Second.
We have a, we have a motion and a second by, I missed it.
Daniel.
I didn't have my microphone on, so I have to back up. I just ended up talking, I ended up talking to myself.
All right, you don't, you don't get correct.
The ones that are highlighted is what the changes were, right?
Yes, sir.
And the other stuff, we're just striking it.
That's correct, yes.
It's been a day or two since we looked at this, so that's why I just wanted to clarify this. All right, I'm, I'm good. I just want to make sure I was reading it right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Mr. McDaniel. I guess Lance doesn't get credit for it, he didn't have the mic on, so.
Yeah.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
Yes.
Ralph Maker?
Yes.
Daniel McDaniel?
Yes.
A.C. Brown?
Yes.
That's unanimous. I'll read the ordinance, and ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number 18-03, regulating the operation of mobile food vendors, mobile vendors, concession trailers, fish carts in the city of Greenwood, Arkansas, requiring a permit and for other purposes.
Thank you. Number two on new business is the Finance Department, a 2018 audit report.
Had to turn on the mic, forgot about that. All right, I want to go over it. You all have a copy of the actual report. It was mailed to you directly by legislative audit. I am gonna go through some of the tabs that are here, that are items that I think are kind of important to stress, let you know about, in case you had some questions when you read through the audit. Now, the audit was late in coming to us. It was not released until the middle of March, and it still hasn't gone through the entire process. There's some things that have to be presented to legislative audit subcommittees, and I, I do want to go through first is the standard letter that comes from the Legislative Audit Committee. It adds, some of the things that were key here that I need to point out is that one of the items that they disclose are, did they have any difficulties encountered in performing the audit? The answer was, we incurred, encountered no significant difficulty dealing with management in the performing and completing of the audit. Management corrected all misstatements, and the answer is, none of the misstatements that were detected as a result of the audit procedure and corrected by management were material, and that's the key. They were not material individually or in aggregate to each opinion unit financials taken as whole. So, if there was something material, we would, we would be having a whole different discussion right now, but there were some minor little things that had no significant impact to the overall financial performance and reporting. We were pleased to report that no disagreements arose during the course of the audit. That's not always the case with cities and/or with the way management in a city decides to report financials. We're reporting it, we pretty much take the advice of the legislative audit and adhere to the legislative audit's recommendations. One of the other things that I wanted to point out in the independent auditors' report is that there is a couple of opinions that they could render. The opinion that they do list here that might catch your eye is that they do an adverse opinion, and the adverse opinion is that we don't follow the U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. That's because we follow the state of Arkansas's mandate for reporting on a cash basis. So, they have to say that we are not adhering to the U.S. GAAP, but they do render an opinion based on the format, a cash basis of accounting format, that they convert to an accrual-based accounting. So, they issued an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting, and it basically says that if our financials present fairly in all material respects, the regulatory-based financial position of the general fund, street fund, and other funds in the aggregate of the city of Greenwood, Arkansas, as of December 31st, 2018, and the regulatory basis revenues and expenditures, and change in net position, as provided by the financial reporting provisions of Arkansas Code, annotated 104412, described in note one. And all that note one does is let you know that we follow Arkansas's state law in how we do fund accounting, and the legislative auditors convert our financials over to U.S. GAAP, for the best of their opinion. One of the things that they did report was the independent auditors' reports on some of the significant, little more significant findings, or supplemental findings, as they called them. One of the things that is always gonna be an issue here at the city is internal controls over the financial reporting, is the segregation of duty issue. We are lean and mean as it comes to our staffing, and everybody knows that, even the auditors admitted that. And while we don't adhere to exactly what would be an optimum segregation of duty, we have implemented mitigating controls, and the mitigating controls at a lot of times work, with the exception of 2018, because as you know, 2018, we had the issue in parks, and that was a, that was a, in, an internal control issue dealing with procurement, and we have since addressed that. We've taken away the silo approval process, where the director can make purchases and approve the purchases on their own. Now, we have to have a supervisor, or even the mayor, somebody higher than the actual director, and the director should not be purchasing their own materials and supplies. And we have implemented, they, they recommended, as of this point, and I'll talk about it in Agenda Item 2, that we, as a result of this, as a city, and they're recommending this to all cities, is that we implement a former, formal code of ethics and conflict of interest statement and disclosure, which we are in the process of doing. And that actually rolls right into item new business number three, which is their recommendation. And I just wanted to make it, we don't have a form to show you yet, but it's under development right now for your consideration. We're putting the final touches on it. It touches the elected officials all the way down to directors, and anybody that has decision-making authority and/or purchasing authority within the city. So, it is coming your way. We, we hope to have this ready within a few, I'd say, probably a couple of months from now. It should be ready to be reviewed and approved and talked about for implementation in 2021. Couple of other things that I wanted to talk about was the, something that was a big issue when I first started in 2017, and realized 2018 was my first full year here as Director of Finance, cash deposits, which is collateralized. We were not sufficiently collateralized in 2017. We take steps in order to make that not a, not an issue going forward, and we are sufficiently collateralized. That's Note 2, page 13 of the report, and that's thanks to a, a monthly collateralization review that I do and provide, as far as in working with Farmers Bank. Another thing is the legal debt limit. That's something we didn't always talk about, because we're not anywhere close to our legal limit for our debt, but just to make you aware, there's property tax secured bonded debt, and the law says that you have to, your bonded indebtedness equals 20% of the total assessed value of tax purposes for real and personal property. As of December 31st, the legal debt limit for the bonded debt is $22,788,000. As of December thirty first, the legal debt limit for the bonded debt is twenty-two million, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, and right now we have no property tax secured bond issues. All our bond issues are secured by city sales and use tax. We do have short-term financing, which is the city's limitation is equal to five percent of the assessed value of taxable property. We do have two operational loans that are in effect right now, both with the fire department. As, as of December thirty first of two thousand and eighteen, we were indebted by these operational loans to Farmers Bank of six hundred and fifty-five thousand, but our debt limit, our debt margin, legal debt margin, five million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand. So you see, those are not issues, and that does not say, oh, go out and spend money. Not in the process. We have to, we have to be very careful when it comes to issuing debt and incurring more, not issuing, but incurring. Couple more things in here that I needed to go over was the actual findings. We did have an internal control deficiency that was reportable in two thousand and eighteen. It was the former Parks Director exploited several dispersment control weaknesses that had to do with Parks Department purchasing and distributions. The internal controls did find it. It was a backend control. It was a detection control that determined it. It was not a preventative control. The detection control did take a couple of months before it filtered through, and when we started seeing some of the purchases and questioning them, that's how it was discovered, and it started unraveling from there. The bottom line is, we'd rather see a, a preventative control in place so that these don't happen, but it's nice to know that at least a mitigating control did finally catch it before it became a material amount. But because this was a potential fraud situation, it is being, it was reported, and it is something that eventually we will have to go and respond to as far as how we implemented changes in the city in order to prevent this from happening again. There is a, another audited reportable finding also determined by the Parks Department Director, Forest Director, and had to do with authority to enter into contracts. There was some confusion as to whether the commission and/or the director had the ability to independently of each other enter into a contract. We've since changed that and tightened down that control. As most of you remember, the Parks Director entered into a contract for entertainment for use of AP commission, I mean AP tax monies that were given to the Parks Director, for Parks Department, excuse me, for the purposes of a Freedom Fest, and that fell through. And when it did, there, it caused twenty thousand dollars to the, to the city as far as paying the deposit off. That was something that is also listed as a reportable finding. There were audit supplemental findings. Most of them had to do with, for instance, our disaster recovery plan. When I first came here, those types of things were not on my immediate radar. As most of you know, there was some other issues with some of the financial reportings, some of the classifications of accounts, things that I had to look at under a microscope. So one of the things that we did do is work with the, our independent contractor for IT, and that is DCR. CenterPoint's disaster recovery plan was an issue that we had a plan, but we hadn't tested it. And now we're in the process of implementing a testing process over the disaster recovery plan. We, we have one written, but the, last year even, they decided that without a test of it, you don't know if it's functional or not. We also had users that had excessive access. The users didn't know they had access to certain things, and we, we hone that down by looking at identifying the users and restricting certain entry points to them for two thousand and nineteen and beyond. Rental property lease, we had an issue with the, one of the lease agreements that we had for the fire station property out off of Highway seventy-one, and that had to do with, we had a lease negotiated and a contract written. It was housed initially over at the fire department. They were the ones that arranged it. We did see it. The auditors even saw it. But when we needed to produce it for the audit, we couldn't find it, and the reason we didn't worry about going after presenting another one to them is that the actual tenant decided not to renew the lease when the lease came up for renewal, and so the issue resolved itself. So we, we got paid for everything we were supposed to be paid for. There was no fault, and so that one technically just went away, although it's written as a supplemental finding. Some of the other two thousand and eighteen Finance Director supplemental findings had to deal with the payroll, and it dealt with some of the interfund transfer accounts. We have since cleaned up all the payroll interfund transfer accounts, the interfund receivable and payable accounts as well. We were in the process of identifying and clearing up some of the outstanding check items. And one of the bigger issues that we're working diligently on is changing our fixed assets reporting. Right now, we use a spreadsheet, but I'm in the process of converting that to the CenterPoint Systems fixed assets and actually having them on our books. That way I can control them more than just having a, a spreadsheet of asset, what comes on and what goes off, and having to turn that over for the auditors to have to make an entry in order to correctly book depreciation. We'll be able to do that on our own system. And the, we had one issue with the city attorney had a budgeted amount for an increase that wasn't passed through, and that's because we never received a form. But regardless of receiving a form, we should be on top of when it's in the budget. We should be requesting something like that that we know didn't happen. And so those are things that are just minor procedural processes so things don't slip through the cracks. All in all, it was a very good audit. They were very pleased with the progress that we made in just one short year, and two thousand and nineteen's audit that's going on right now, I believe, will be even better. So even though there's a new in-charge, an auditor in-charge for this audit, I believe that our working relationship with them will be very good. It is being done off-site, so there is a little bit of a technical issue that we're having to deal with by giving them our documents. But right now I don't see any, there hasn't been any major concerns or major hiccups at this point, but it is still early on, and we're still working through getting some of the data to them. And other than that, if there's not any questions, I think I handled two and three on your agenda.
You did. And normally, I, I thank you, Tom, but that was very painful to go through again, but thank you anyway. Sometimes reliving the past is, is a little bit painful, but the good news is, as you pointed out, many things have been put in place to keep the, any, a lot of that from happening again. And for those who aren't aware, and certainly all of us are aware, that that particular employee is no longer employed with the city of Greenwood as far as Parks Department goes for sure. So, but thank you for that very detailed report. If there's not any questions, or if there are questions, we'd entertain those or comments right now. If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the audit as reported by Mr. Marsh. I got a motion, but I'm not sure who.
Hey, I think Daniel did it.
It was Daniel.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, thanks for that. That was, I mean, I actually think I understood it for one. Second.
They have a motion and a second by somebody.
Tim Terry.
Oh, Tim, okay. I got it. Some kind of magic is going on because they'd see Lance had switched places on my, on my views screen. I'm not sure how you're doing that, but that's pretty cute.
Is there any way to put everybody on one screen?
Yeah, swipe it.
I'll start swiping.
Are you on an iPad?
Okay. Yeah, when someone speaks.
We need to vote.
Yes, we have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Lance Terry?
Yes.
Ralph Sneaker?
Yes.
Daniel McDaniel?
Yes.
A.C. Brown?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is number four, Planning Department Ordinance Providing Authority to Code Enforcement Officer to Issue Citations. Let me, real quick, if, I think Mr. Bell's, I know he's at in the council room, come into the podium. This may, yeah, he's there. This, this actually caught me off guard, I think, as, as a lot of other folks, and certainly as, as we were trying to literally clean up and, and get things cleaned up in town, whether they be residential or commercial or whatever, we kind of all were under the impression, at least I was, that we had something in place to make that happen and make it easy to happen, and it's, and it's never been as easy as long as I've been in office, but hopefully this is a tool that will, that will help us with that. So I'll turn it over, Mr. Bell.
Eric Council of this area. This is an ordinance, it's a copy of the ordinance for snafuses to give their code enforcement building inspectors the opportunity to
Are you guys here?
No, I'm digital. We may have to mute everybody.
Could you hear me?
I'm not, I, I.
Do we have a? Do, do we have, I mean, on here, I know there's, we're looking at enforcement, but do we have a, do we have a violation? I mean, do we have a fine setup, sheet set up for different offenses, or how's that going to work?
Lance, that will come next. This has given us the authority to start the process. We also have to the process of, after we issue a citation, how we get into the court. That will be something that we'll be working with Mr. Hamby on. The ordinances that code enforcement, most of them have plans and things like that, but there was no way for us to issue a citation. We were having to depend on the police department or, or, we really just didn't have the direction on how to do this, and this gives us the direction to do it. We've been, we've been trying to deal with this for two or three years, and this finally gives us the answer to go.
Okay, I guess, but I mean, if we got somebody, I mean, we pass this for emergency, then, I mean, do we have, do we have the, I mean, say we got somebody in violation now, I mean, what, is it just going to be, I mean, do we have something to go by, or we just, I mean?
Right now, right now, all I have are the, the forms that I've used in the past. I don't have an actual citation book. I will have to be find the, someone, you know, some supplier that gives, that we can get those from. But with this, it's given me the authorization to buy the citation.
Atlanta, I also think, and, and I think to answer maybe part of your question, maybe not, was, I think the court as, and you, this may be wrong, Sonny, but the court, I think, was to, and Mike can chime in, the court was to decide if, if we don't have something said ourselves, and the court would decide what that fine would be. Is that right, Mr. Hamby?
No, we need to have some type of a fine in place.
Okay. But.
My code enforcement ordinances do have fines attached to them that, that we could use. Now, I'm working on the update of the permitting and fees and things like that, and that, this will be also added to them.
So, so we, are we having people do stuff without permits, I guess, is what, what's brought this kind of about, I guess you'd say?
Yes. Seth, in the last week, had one air-condition company that he found at least two, maybe three replacements, that they didn't get a permit. He notified them of it, and they told him that they would be down the next morning to get the permit. They didn't show up. It went on for two or three days until I finally got involved and, and basically told them that if they didn't show up that day, that they would never put another air conditioner in.
I mean, I, I mean, I know you're probably not at liberty to say, but I mean, if these are local people, is there any, I didn't, haven't read completely through this, but is there any way we could, I mean, like, suspend their privilege license? Because, you know, you got to have a privilege license in the city of Greenwood. I mean, could that be one of the things that we could, we could look at doing?
One of the things we could do, we could also report them to the state agencies if they're licensed through the state.
Right, because I, I do know that the, the Contractor Board has, they have made some changes. I just recently got my, my renewal in the mail, and I noticed they've made some changes to some stuff that, that's kind of requiring more people to, to have that, you know, license and that type of thing to do stuff. So I just, and, you know, we, we require that privilege license, so I was just kind of curious. That may be something we might add in there, too.
Well, let me speak to that. Our privilege license, you know, is, is a record-keeping type of a tool. And just because someone doesn't have their privilege license, doesn't mean they stop working, you know? I mean, it's good to do, and you can do it, but it may not help solve the problem. Just, just add that.
Right. So, so if I don't renew my privilege license next year, you're not going to keep me from working?
Refuse to get it, then, you know, we go through the process of the penalty and all of that.
Okay, I, I just curious. I'm just asking a question because I, I didn't, I didn't notice. I just hate to start writing citations if we didn't have any fines in place. Is that, I guess, was the main thing I was asking. Well, we had something in place. We're going to start writing citations.
Well, and I guess that's for, on the, on the building side, is, is this also, like Sandy, replacing judgments against property owners for mowing and stuff? We're just going to give them a citation and then let them go to court?
That would be a good way to do it, and that way we can collect our restitution with a hammer over their head of going to jail with paid restitution.
I'm confused about this. Funny, I, I couldn't hear what you were saying very well earlier, so I hope, I'm sorry if you've already said this, but, you know, I guess my question is, what, what have we been doing, you know, in the absence of this ordinance? What has been taking place for the past few years? What's going to be different, you know, to A.C.'s comment there? You know, I thought that this was taken care of by the courts. We don't issue the citations. The city doesn't issue the citations. It takes place in the courts. But I, I guess I'm just not clear. What's been going on for the past few years? Have we not been issuing any citations when people violate these ordinances? And is that what the emergency is at this point?
Are you? Charlotte, can, can you hear Sonny?
No.
I don't think anybody can. Tom, Tom. Tom just went in there. Maybe he's going to check that out. I think.
On my perspective.
Yeah.
What has been happening is we've been mowing the yards. We've been sending bills out. Nobody pays them. Generally, some type of a bank owns them. We never get our money back. Citations have not been issued, and I think that this is the tool we need in order to put a hammer over somebody's head. Otherwise, you're just going to sit for years and years and not recover your expenses.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Barely.
Okay. Daniel, I'm sorry. I really didn't hear all of your question.
I was, I, I was asking, you know, what's, what's been taking place for the last couple of years, and Mr. Hamby, I think, just answered that question, which is nothing, basically. You know, as far as issuing citations, fines being paid.
Is, you know.
Lost, lost again. Lost, lost again.
Hey, Mike, if you could, if you can hear this, is the, uh, is, does this, the, the code enforcement stuff, will that, will that cover the, the, uh, fire marshal, fire marshal side of it also?
You can have it that way, but I don't know if you're gonna have to train your code enforcement officer, uh, in the fire code regulations.
Right.
But yeah, I think.
I know we had some issues in the past where there's been some people not wanting to comply with the, you know, the state fire code and, and we've never had the ticketing authority for that. So I was just, I didn't know if, if this ordinance being, you know, for the, for code, code enforcement, if it would, if it would be able to, um, to, uh, accommodate that or not.
I believe it would.
Okay, just, just checking.
So it would, so it would actually double up for, for the fire marshal or would we have to add that in there, Mike?
It would, you would need to make it clear in there that you're covering the commercial as well.
In that, in that section A, where it says an employee of the city of Greenwood designates a code enforcement officer or city inspector slash, I mean, we, I, I just think that there's, I know there's been some times we've had people that didn't, didn't want to follow the, the state law with that. And I've just, you know, I mean, if we could, if this is an opportunity to enforce that, that we've been needing enforced, then I think we ought to consider doing that.
Uh, I agree. I think, I think the fire marshal should have the same ability to go out and get those citations is, is, and I would, I would, in my opinion, enforcement to have to do that also, he's gonna have enough in place and you already got a fire marshal in place.
Yeah, we got, we have a fire marshal so that, I mean, they could, he could, you know, he could, he could work, he could work with our code enforcement officer, you know, on, on that type of thing to, to, um, to make that work, I think, Mayor.
I agree.
Honey, you may try going to Tom Marshall.
Can you hear us?
Not very well.
Hello?
We can hear that, but we can't.
But I, I think. To Lance's comment, though, I think it would be good to add it to that, uh, item A, section one, you know, put fire marshal in there as well.
I, I agree.
We thought. We're having a hard time here in Sunny, so I'm gonna take it upon you to get with him and y'all can, I mean, I, I'm all for this. I don't have a problem. People's not, you know, doing what they should do. And if it's, if it's a way to get the yards mowed, I'm all for that, cause there's plenty of them in town that need to be mowed. But if the code enforcement is the issue here where we can just, we can cite them and, and, and they either pay it or go to jail, that would be, uh, in my book, the, the, the way to go.
Yeah, people are gonna react different when they have an actual citation in their hand. I think it's gonna make a difference. Sunny's stepped into my, uh, office, so he, he can hear your, your question, or asking about adding the fire marshal.
Lance, in section E, it says noting that this section shall not prohibit, prohibit the exercise of authority by the Greenwood police personnel. We can add fire marshal into that point, so it's not getting in their way.
Right.
Or whatever, whatever you want to do. If you want to add it in to A.
I think, put it right here.
It just, it just seems like to me, this is a really good opportunity for future, future down the road that, you know, we, for, for covering those deals too. I mean, we're, that way we'd be covering all of our bases here on, on that.
Yeah. Hamby is a fire marshal, not technically a code enforcement officer.
Uh, depends on how you define it in your ordinances. I don't think that the code enforcement officers are necessarily gonna be, uh, trained in your fire code. Then, then Sunny can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't, I would think they would have to have some additional training.
Oh, that's my, my, my thought though, is a fire marshal acting in his capacity is enforcing fire code.
He's forcing the fire code.
Fire code.
Fire code.
Yeah, which is code enforcement though. I mean, I think if, if you don't change a word in this, he still has the authority to enforce the fire code, is my point.
The, the code enforcement officer?
Or the fire marshal.
Code enforcement officer, uh, is over the municipal code, not fire code.
Right, the, the, the fire code's a state code. It's a, which is a, which you, you have to have a, I mean, you're, you're licensed for that. There's a cer, there's a certification for that. You just don't, they just don't hand those out, so.
That's pretty intense, uh, training for fire marshal.
I, I see what you're saying. With the language that's there now, if you just added fire marshal, he's, he's also over municipal codes. I see what, I see what you're saying, Daniel.
I think he's over municipal code, whether you add his title there or not, is my point. Dirk can go enforce the code.
I don't see where that's.
Fire marshal or, because it's municipal code, either one. As long as it's relative to.
Well, yeah, it's relative to his position, yeah. I mean, I.
I guess what I was trying to get at, I was just wanting to see if this is where we, would be the time to put in for actually, you know, if we have a business that doesn't wanna, you know, um, update to what they're gonna do to meet our, you know, to meet the fire codes and stuff, if they're trying to beat the system to where we can, we can, you know, I mean, there should be some kind of citation that's, that we should be able to do with that also, right along with, with all this.
Mike, Mike, what's your opinion on how to word that in this one, in this document?
We might just need to have to revamp it. Uh, I don't know that I'm gonna be able to just reword it as we sit here.
Off the cuff.
But you, you, you can put it on for first reading and maybe we can clean it up next meeting. I don't know. I don't know if there's.
Well, that would give Sunny some time to get back with those violation of fees and that type of stuff too, that we could look at and make sure that, you know, I mean, I mean, I'd like to see them myself. I mean, I hate, I hate, I mean, I know we've been going by the court system and doing, and I mean, you've got some fees, but, excuse me, I'd like, I'd like to see, you know, what we're, how it's broke down and what we're gonna do as far as, you know, somebody don't buy a permit or, or that type of deal, we can, we can.
Wouldn't be bad idea to have that as an attachment.
And that would give Mike time to maybe, um, to relook this over and then, and, and put it all one. And if we need to pass it next meeting for emergency, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Then the building code, uh, if, if somebody doesn't buy a permit and then we go out and we discover that they don't buy a permit, when they come in, we have the authorization to charge them a hundred percent more for a permit, plus their normal cost of the permit too. That's written in the ordinance.
Right. Well, Mayor, don't you have the ability to, uh, to get with Sunny if they don't wanna buy a permit to stop work order on whatever they're doing until we get, till they get lined out?
Yeah, yeah, we. And we, yeah, we actually exercised that recently, yes.
Okay.
Not, not that they necessarily, yeah, absolutely.
So, I, I don't really have any issues with thi- this myself. I mean, is, and I'm just one, but I just think it'd be a good time if Mike could, could help you get something lined out where we could at least clean up that and get it where it's, you know, it's, it's, uh, we're able to get everybody on page that, for the, for the code enforcement stuff. And then that way give you a little time to get all the fees and stuff together for next month's meeting. That, that's my.
This came straight out of Fort Smith and it, uh, used the, uh, Arkansas statute, uh, twelve nine one oh eight. That's where, that's where it came from.
But, but I, but I also feel like, you know, I, I mean, on one side, I agree with Daniel, you know, don't need to add anything, uh, that we don't need to add, but I think common terminology, people think of code enforcement as, as yards and, and upkeep and things like that. And city inspector as inspecting, but, you know, a fire marshal, I think, really needs to be included in there too, just to kind of distinguish between the, you know, all three of them.
Okay.
Yep, sounds good.
Well, I'll make a motion to put it on for the, for, uh, title only for its first reading.
Before we go, before we second this, we've been through this before a few years back and there was discussion about giving a firearm to these code folks. We need to make sure we need, don't need to go down that path.
They're already packing. I'm kidding, that was a joke. I don't, I don't think anybody is after that. I, I don't.
No, in fact, this ordinance says it doesn't authorize that.
Yeah.
I mean, there was talk about if I won't be writing tickets, I wanna be able to, uh, in case somebody gets mad at me and be able to, whatever, defend myself.
If it comes to that, Tim, we will call for the police to, uh,
Assist.
accompany us, you know, if we see that we're in, in that type of, uh, issue.
Got you.
Okay, I got a motion. Put on for the first reading, title only, I think.
Yes, sir.
And a second about Mr., Mr. Tim Terry. Thanks, Sunny.
Uh, AC Brown?
Yes.
And McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
Yes.
That's unanimous. I'll read the ordinance. An ordinance providing authority to code enforcement officers and city inspectors to issue citations and warning notices of offense in the city of Greenwood, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Thank you. Uh, number five on your new business, I'm going to withdraw that from tonight's meeting. We're, uh, we've had, when I say we, uh, myself, Mr. Bell, uh, uh, city attorney, Mike Hamby have had, actually, and, and Tom Marsh had a meeting with the owners of Senec Solar at City Hall. Uh, I guess it was last week or the week before last, just going over, uh, questions about a contract that Senec had, had, uh, provided for us. And, and I think we got those questions answered pretty well, uh, from this, from our attorney and, and, but, but there's still some things to discuss and I didn't want to complicate this kind of meeting. But we, those guys were ready to zoom in with us, but I thought that it might be hard to understand. So I, I asked them if we could kind of get our act together a little bit better and maybe meet in person, maybe, maybe next month. But just to look, just to give you that data, we, I'm moving forward with the discussion with them, uh, and trying to get more information and also, uh, uh, looking at property and things like that. But it, for tonight, I just want to remove that from the agenda. So number five is, is gone. So we'll move on to number six, which is the one we added. And it's, uh, a resolution, uh, we're not at. Twenty twenty city of Greenwood budget to allow the retiring, remaining tap rights to Floyd Brown and increasing the miscellaneous line item within the water, going in fund and for other purposes. Uh, Tom, did you want to speak on this or?
I think Daniel had a, had his hand up.
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I, I took, there you are. Yes, sir.
Probably the bad guy in the room, but. And I guess I understand that if a guy has two tap fees, then they're in his name, not specific to property. Was that correct? The way those taps were?
That, the, the wording of that, and I, I think Mr. Bell could probably speak a little bit better too, or maybe, maybe even Mr. Hamby, but the way that wording is, is the, I think you refer to it as the property. Is that right, Sunny? It's.
He's coming. Hold on.
Uh, can you hear me, Bob, here?
Can you hear him?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, from what I remember on that, uh, contract, it said that the water taps were to be used on the land. It doesn't say what land or anything else. It says the land. So therefore that would be a point of, I guess, in a, in a court. It doesn't specifically say it has to be on Floyd's property, but it doesn't say that it, it, it can't be, you know, that's. We, we've had this issue, uh, had an issue with the, uh, gentleman down here on Bell Road that was building a substandard house right outside the city limits. And we told him from day one that he needed permits, he needed inspections, and he kept ignoring us. And then he was going to, uh, get a tap for a ground and, and certain bits of our, uh, rules and regulations. And so if we can get rid of this, these taps, it will sure save us a lot of headaches.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Other thing that is just frustrating here, but I suppose we can do about it is somebody got free tap and we're gonna spend eight thousand dollars to buy them back, you know? That's pretty frustrating, but I mean. Accent.
He got the tap for an evening of, uh, bringing the water line across his, the, uh, water creek. That's, that's what, what the tap was for. Instead of paying for an evening, he took it out and prayed for the tap. We've done that in other areas, but in this case, it was too many and it was too long and it was too vague.
I guess I'll be the other bad guy in the room. I, uh, I'm a little frustrated because, and I, and I know the commissions are dire, dire needs for our city. They help make a lot of decisions, taught a lot, take a lot of weight off, but what aggravates me is they go and buy and purchase land without lease. I know they had it in their budget, but it wasn't, it wasn't allocated that the fact that it was buying Floyd Brown's land or that road up there. And it would be nice to know that, because at the end of the day, those guys are not elected officials like we are, that are gonna have to answer for all the headaches if something ain't right. Not saying that it ain't gonna be right, but, and, and, and Mike, you may, you may wanna re-quote me here, but I, I do remember that Mike told us in a meeting before that we didn't need to purchase that land because we could still use it. And so it's just aggravating, it's just aggravating that the, the commission goes and buys, buys land that, that we're now responsible for, that we didn't really have any say in. And, and it's just, it gets kind of frustrating at times when, when that happens and that, that's something that I, I'm not really, and then, and then, you know, turn around paying Floyd back, cause it's all about the money. But, uh, anyway, I just, I just wanted to get that out there, get that off my chest, that I think that if it was ever labeled in that budget for, for twenty twenty evacuation for the property from Floyd Brown, it would have been a different outcome.
That land get bought?
The land is, the, it is not closed yet.
But I, you, you know, Mr. Hamby, maybe you clear this up, but I think Lance got a really good point that when it was brought to us, uh, the, the instructions we were given was, you don't need to buy that land, you already own that land because it's a road. And I think I agree with Lance, if that would have been brought before the council, one of us would have said, well, we were advised not to buy that land. We already own it. And then there would have at least been a discussion.
AC, I know you're all sitting on that, on that commission now, or you're a representative for this, for the, uh, the council. I mean, how, how did that, how did that play out? I'm just kind of curious.
Well, uh, you know, they, uh, just discussed it because, again, like Sandy, it came up before the, you know, uh, our council in the past. And, you know, to me, it was just, uh, again, it was an opportunity finally for, for Floyd Brown to, I guess in some ways be reasonable and, uh, and negotiable, you know, over, uh, uh, an issue. Uh, whereas, you know, in the past, he, you know, he was very hard to negotiate with. And so finally, he, he came to the table, you know, willing to, uh, negotiate and, you know, make compromise. And so, uh, they decided, you know, let's go ahead and kind of, uh, seize the opportunity while, you know, Floyd is in a, uh, a bargaining mood. And we could clear up kind of two things at once. Those, uh, you know, uh, outstanding, you know, taps, but also this issue of, you know, a squabble over the, uh, you know, the, the property access and who's, who's the owner of the property.
Do we, have we seen, is there, do we know, is there like, I mean, a legal abstract deed or whatever to that, to that road and that piece of property? And is there, I mean, how many, I mean, is it, is it clean title work or do we, do we know any of that yet?
That's what I've advised them to do, is not do anything until they have a title search. And I've referred them to the title company because, uh, you know, I don't know whether Floyd had, didn't have fifty liens out there on it. I, I have no idea. So when this was presented to me, I immediately said, present it to you. And, uh, let's also refer it to the title company to see if there's even, if it's possible to do this, if, if we wanted to proceed, so.
Has there been any checks cut, Mayor?
The, yeah, the checks are cut, but they're, again, it's not closed, so no money is exchanged.
Okay.
Charlie, are, are you? Charlie, are, are you there?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Can you, can you touch on, based on, on the discussions with the title company?
Yes, it is actually set to close tomorrow, I believe. And, uh, we've got two checks written separately, one for the closing parts of the land and the other one for the eight thousand dollars for the out of city taps. So we can still close on it tomorrow. Yes, the title search has been done and it's ready. The, the, uh, abstract company has done all that, all of its work.
So they did. So they're guaranteeing there's nothing, there's nothing out there against it or, or anything? Is that just what I'm trying to say?
That is all supposedly sewed up. Um, it's land and title closing and.
What's those two checks for? How much are they for? How much are the checks for?
One of them is, the eight thousand dollar one is for the out of city tax and the other one is fifteen thousand ninety-eight point seventy-two for the land and the, and the closing costs.
So that's what, twenty? I'm trying to do the math here in my head.
I think, I think Tom left to go get them to, to give you a total.
He has the closing documents, Shala does. But just so you know. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. It came in less than, than what their budget was. The uh, for the land. About a thousand and cost, but they had half of two thousand. So the, and as far as the eight thousand, that had to come out. So it's eight thousand plus the, the fifteen, whatever. So it ends up being about twenty-three thousand for the whole thing.
Right.
Well, and I, I know just like Sam, whether, you know, the, the issue of as far as the property, you know, goes, uh, you know, I've, I've kind of using you, Daniel, as a, uh, as an example, you know, when the old live out loud building that y'all had, there was, I mean, there was the issue of the property line there and who owned what, you know, as far as the, the side of that buil- building there. And, and it, it had transposed, you know, three or four different owners until, you know, you got stuck with the hassle of trying to sort it all out. And I was just kind of looking at it this way with Floyd, that this hopefully be a way to, to do a, uh, a clean resolution for, you know, and kind of get that issue resolved once and for all.
How, how big of a piece of property are we talking about?
It's a road.
It's a road. It, I don't know the dimension, I don't know the dimensions, but it's the road that comes out from Mount Harmony, goes back to the sewer plant in the back, in the back way. And the budget, the budget, actually, we were talking about the budget a while ago. The sewer budget reflects, and it doesn't say Floyd Brown, whoever said that's correct, but it does, what it does say is land purchase for access road. And it was budgeted for seventeen thousand dollars. That's what's in the budget. Are you familiar with the road, Ralph?
You're trying to ask Mount Harmony, Ralph?
I, I know, I know exactly where you're talking about. I'm just having a hard time, uh, digesting that much money just for road access. That, that I can't, I don't know, can't testify to that.
Let me tell you, the reason that you're even entertaining this is because the eight thousand dollars for the sewer part of that, I mean, for the water part of that, which is the water tap, that is an unbudgeted item. You know, according to our budget, it says any unbudgeted item greater than five thousand dollars has to be approved by the city council. And this is an unbudgeted item. Now, they do have a way to try to mitigate it and to minimize it to where it does not have a financial impact on the bottom line by adjusting other spending items. But the technicality is it is an unbudgeted item greater than five thousand dollars. That's why it's being brought before you today.
What's going to happen in the future is it's going to be, we can use the land, then no, y'all can't use the land. We can use the land, no, you can't use the road. You can, because we're going to go back and forth. And I'm assuming the water commission just want to put that to bed. It would be the way I could see this. Now, I agree paying for this, I mean, I, I agree that Mr. Hamby had mentioned before, we don't need to pay for it, or we already own it per se, but I think just to put the whole thing to bed is what the reasoning is behind just making this purchase and then moving on, not having to worry about having to bicker with Floyd anymore. Well, it would have been nice though, I agree to put it to bed, but it would have been nice just to put in the budget saying, hey, we want to buy that land for Floyd to shut him up and move on our merry way. I agree with that. I agree with that. Instead of, instead of going about it like we did. And I'm not saying we, I'm talking about the commission, bottom line. And I mean, that's just the way it is. So. You know, if, if you look at it from the outside, looking in, sometimes it don't look quite kosher, I guess you could say. Well, let's just pay Floyd off so he'll, so he'll be quiet.
Well, I think, I think here, here's something to consider. I mean, and, and really what Tom said is exactly right. What's brought to you tonight is the eight thousand because it was not, you can't do that, that council approval. Whether, and, and technically, uh, the, there is a purchase in the sewer budget for land, road access. It doesn't have Floyd's name on it, but it is in there. And, and so there's that. But the other thing, I mean, that road is, and I'm not, we can call if, if it means anything or if it helps. I don't know if it does or not. We can, it is a valuable piece of property to, when I say valuable, to the access of the back of the sewer plant. Uh, Greg Cross would be the first one to testify to that. Uh, you know, can we live without it? We can. We did. And we, and we had before when it was, when it was off limits to us. But as far as, if you just took everything out of the equation and said, this is a piece of property that lends itself to access to our sewer plant, it certainly does that.
Well, I think even more so, Mayor, wouldn't it be with the, with the new bypass thing too? I mean, that, that access might become even more important.
That's, you're exactly right. Sonny just mentioned that too, as you were saying, we don't, the unknown of how the traffic relief is going to look, how much it's going to take of the front entrance of our sewer plant. And it is unknown. So there, there is a possibility that we lose that completely. I don't, I don't, we.
You'll be able to sell me on that right there that we might need it for access to the sewer plant. I can live with that for sure.
Yeah.
I take, I agree. I agree with everything everybody said. Lance has got very valid points. Mayor's got very valid points. I just, the, the frustrating thing from where I sit is just, I guess, the way the whole thing has gone down. You know, we didn't know about it. The, we were told to do it one way in a meeting several months ago. And it's gone a completely different way. And there's a check written, signed for these amounts, and now it's brought to us for a vote, you know, after. Well, the, after the fact is the way it feels. Technically it isn't, but it, that's the way it feels from.
Well, the, and I, and I agree with the, the feeling that you must have on this, but today, today, and I, I, Charlotte can testify. I mean, she's the one that said, hey, this is, it really didn't hit on me either, but this is, this, this eight thousand dollar is above and beyond the amount that is allowed, that is not budgeted. And, and it, and it is absolutely not budgeted. And that's why you have that resolution. If, if the other check or if the other amount was not budgeted, we would, we or somebody would be presenting you with a resolution to prove that. But since there is an amount budgeted for it, as, as hard as that, I mean, I, I get everybody's comments. I, I completely understand the whole, the whole situation. But that, as, as Tom, as Tom pointed out, that's the reason for the, for bringing it to you, the, the eight thousand for sure.
Now, perhaps somebody on the water commission could have said, uh, that's an unbudgeted item, Floyd, and I can, uh, spend up to five thousand dollars without having to take it to the council. And so therefore my spending limit's five thousand dollars. Could have saved the city three thousand, maybe. I don't know. But anyway.
It just makes me wonder if there, are there any other Floyd Brown landmines out there that, that were agreements made years ago and negotiating with Floyd?
I would imagine so.
Can't, can't even, can't even imagine.
We're just a bunch of Jayhawk and SOBs.
It's going to come up.
If you thought I was going to get by without saying that, you're crazy.
I can't, I can't believe it took that long.
I actually got the letter at home. I started to bring it tonight.
Right.
Okay. So I'm reading them. So what, 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 what do we gain it by these, by the, he's going to relinquish his two remaining rights for out of city water taps. I mean, can that help us down the road? What? What are those specifically? What's an out of city water tap? I'm just reading from the order.
Former mayor handing two water taps to land that's not in the city limits.
Right. Our administrations. Yes.
Yeah.
Oh. He could go by the light next to your house and say, I have a water tap.
Okay.
Right, correct.
Okay.
They're not, they're not out there in, if, if we own, if we buy them, we own them, they're no longer out there for five years from now or twenty years from now or whatever.
So they're just on this easement that he, we exchange, or they're just anywhere in the city water taps?
They're, they're in no particular place. They are, they are not a,
I got you.
Yeah, it's not a place. It's a, it's a, it's a tap. Yeah.
I understand, my understanding, Tim, was the fact that he had those, he could use them anywhere he felt they were redeemable. Okay.
Yeah, the word, the wording of the, that original contract, if you will, is pretty vague. The, the, the land.
What, what I was thinking was, is like when we extended water out there to tractor supply and we put that moratorium on other water taps that, I don't know, was sixty day or ninety day to, to get, uh, water taps at a, at a set price. And then after that, they were going to go up significantly to cover the cost of the, the water line.
Yeah.
One, uh, landowner or whatever came in there and was arguing with us about that, that he missed the deadline and he was wanting to, to, uh, uh, get it at the, the, the cheapest price.
Right.
And I'm thinking, you know, Floyd, that's when Floyd Brown could come in there and say, well, hey, you know, I'll sell you this water tap for X amount of dollars, you know, and, and be, you know, cheaper than what the city is going to charge you, you know, the twenty thousand or whatever, if that was out there. Good point.
Basically, the former mayor made a real bad deal and we're going to pay eight thousand dollars to get out of it.
About twenty-four thousand. Well, I mean, if you count the road for an inch too. Anyway, I'm tired of talking about it. Let's make a motion and mo, I'll make a motion, we approve resolution and go on.
I have a, I have a motion from Lance Terry and two seconds from A.C. and Tim Terry, whichever one.
I showed a note, it's the Jayhawker.
Yeah. Since me and Lance were personally named Jayhawkers.
Yeah. We were center punched.
Hocker one and Jayhawker two.
All right. She, she's, she's calling the rope.
A.C. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
Yes.
Dan Terry?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, that is the last item on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken, gets us to the department reports, questions from council, as you know. Well, I don't know if you know it or not, but Mr. Bell is here. All other departments heads were instructed to be not necessarily zoomed in because we were afraid it would cause too much interference. But if you have, we can, we can reach anybody by phone. Uh, if you have any questions or comments for them, we can do that.
Is the chief of police still there?
Chief is, I, well, I'm not in there. Are you here, chief?
He is here. Yes, he's there.
Okay.
I was just wondering what pepper ball is.
Come on down, you'll show it.
Wow.
Called him out.
Yeah.
I, I read, I read his reports. I don't go unread.
I can testify that it is ver, he didn't, I didn't get shot, but I, I did get a little taste of that, uh, substance and it's, it's, it's stout. I would not want to be shot with that.
Okay, I got you. So it's not a tase and some other spray or whatever?
I didn't have time to read the fire department report.
It's actually to replace the taser, right, chief?
Yes.
It's politically correct, Tim. Oh, let me mute real quick.
Daniel, did you have something?
I said I didn't have enough time to read the fire chief's report before the meeting.
Oh.
It's very short. It was perfect.
Nothing happened in July.
Nothing happened. That's right.
Uh, I just want to also add that, uh, unfortunately, we have technical difficulties with our Facebook live stream. It was competing with the microphone in the city council room, and that is why we were having so much disturbance. So I had to end that. It says being recorded though, so we'll have that.
Got you.
Okay. Anything else for any other department heads? Again, we can reach them by phone if you need, if we need to. Nope. Okay. Counsel forum?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Ten Spur, the ditches and the, the, all through there, it's all grown up between Liberty Drive all the way down to Westwood, all them ditches. I mean, is that, are we going to have to, I mean, what the heck? I mean, it looks like a jungle.
They're not ours yet.
They're not ours yet. As you know, that's highway department right away and easement right away. And, and I have put in a request to get that taken care of, uh, through the highway department. They've not showed up yet. Typically you'd see that done maybe once a year. It's, it's obviously when we get, when we do take that over, things will change. But yes, I, I do have a request in and I'll, I'll, uh, double up.
It won't take much longer. We can log it.
That's true. It's true.
It's terrible. It's terrible. And then the other question I got is, um, where are we at on, uh, Mr. Jason, Jacob Burton there on by the Davis Fitness Gym and he's digging?
We are on that, believe it or not. Now, that, that not going to make you feel warm and fuzzy, but we, uh, we had a meeting, when I say we, Sonny, uh, Seth and myself had a meeting with Jacob last week here at City Hall, sitting down, talked to him about that situation and other situations in town. Uh, encouraged him to say the least, to get that, uh, permit renewed. Seth provided me with the paper, with some paperwork today that Jacob had provided him to renew that permit. We're not satisfied with all of that just yet. It's a work in progress. Uh, we've had some very serious conversations with Jacob on, on that particular project. Uh, he had, he had finished up, I think for the, well, I don't know if he's finished over on the other project, but, but the one behind Davis Gym is a, is a big concern to us and we're, we're working with him. Uh, Seth was, Seth is in the middle of that. I'll put it that way.
I understand. I'm just curious where he's at because I know he's been, he's been hauling a lot of stuff out there and it just, it just looks like another typical strip mine, you know? Uh, type. So I would just, I'm just wondering where we're at because I knew you, I knew you said you were going to work on it. So I was just curious.
Absolutely. It's, we're working hard and heavy on it. Yeah.
I got one for the, I guess it'd be the street department for Dennis.
Okay.
Out here on Mount Harmony, just up from the new road we just bought, there, where Grinnell comes out and meets Mount Harmony. Uh, there's two fitness gyms down here and a lot of folks in this area, they come over from the other neighborhoods that walk and jog and they do so at night. I'd, I'd like to see a street light added be- between like, um, Laurel and Farley Loop or, I'd like to, Grinnell's kind of in the middle there. Be nice to have a light. There's a whole lot of people walking out there, not me obviously, but and they run from the CrossFit deal and everything. It'd be nice to have an extra street light down there.
Get, give me those two street names again.
Well, Grinnell Circle and where it meets Mount Harmony, just literally right across Mount Harmony, there's a pole right up there by the sidewalk. It'd be a perfect spot for it.
Okay.
I just, I mean, I, I hate to have stuff done by my house, but there's a ton of people that walk out here at night. It'd be nice to have it lit up a little bit for them.
Yep. Okay. Do you need to talk to him now or you need to just pass that on and see what we're getting?
Pass it on. I mean, it'd be fun. He can, maybe he'll drive out here and look at it.
Typically, that's as easy as us calling the power company and, and getting it done. I don't think that's a big, big, big issue for sure.
All right. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Uh, I have a, a question about the, the bypass. Is there, uh, if that, Uh, I have a, a, a question about the, the bypass. Is there, uh, is that?
You mean?
Or is that kinda being stopped, uh, because of the COVID virus or where are we standing on that?
Uh, no, that's not, that's not the word I get from, uh, Ms. Lori. I, I called, I had spoken to her probably now about a month ago. She's the new director of RDOT, as you know. And she ins- ensured me and encouraged me that they are still working on it. It would, she didn't give me a timeline of when we would see the first true design, if you will. But they, they have not forgotten us, I assure you. I don't let them. Uh, so, in fact, she will be on a conference call uh, with, uh, NPO here coming up, I think next weekend if it's sunny. So I will address that again with her. We, we don't have, nothing's been sent to me from them. You know, the last, the, the last communication I had was her, was it's still gonna happen. It's still, they're working on it. Uh, now, that's not to say they may have slowed down because of the COVID, working at home and that sort of thing, but there, there's been, there's been no message to me that anything's on hold or anything like that.
I don't know how many of y'all have gone out east of town between here and Boonville, but they've chipped and sealed from like Country Club Road all the way.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure it's not the new deal. I don't, I, I hope they don't think when we get Tin Spur turned over to us at some point, they're gonna chip and seal through town.
Yeah, I noticed that too. I, I don't know. I don't know what that's about. I haven't, Chad, I was actually gonna talk to Chad. Uh, can't remember his last name, but he's the local guy here that's.
Well, it's horrible. It's horrible on your tires.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, I was surprised to see that happen, so I don't.
Horrible on the paint job too.
Yeah.
All the gravels.
All the scrapping.
On the paint job on your car.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah.
On the front of my truck. I just, I've been working out east of town the last week and a half and woo, woo.
Yeah.
Horrible.
Yep. I'll, uh, I'll ask about that though, the chip and seal on, that that's.
I, uh, I guess another question I got, the, the sidewalk on Center Street.
Yes, sir.
Is that?
We have easements in our possession and we, we, Sonny's been working pretty diligent on that. Notifying people that are out of state, reaching out to those that are gonna be, get, or not necessarily out of state, but that aren't in Greenwood. So he may have more information, but I, I know he's working on that. We actually have them in the office. There's thirty-six of them. Thirty-seven, thirty-six. Jeremy Shore's got those to us. Uh, we actually asked for a little bit more information than what Jeremy provided originally, so when we go to these, uh, property owners and we can, in fact, one, for instance, uh, and we knew they would and, and I would too, if somebody spent the sidewalk, if they wanna know where it's gonna be, they don't wanna just necessarily sign off on it. They wanna know Church of Christ, for instance, on Highway Tin Spur has a very nice sign out in front. They wanna know that we're not coming through there turning their sign down, so uh, they didn't really ask that, but, but so we do have them all here. They're in, they're in the building. And when it gets through making phone calls, we're gonna literally go out in the field and start trying to get some signatures and take a, uh, uh, notary with us and get those things signed.
Good deals.
Is that the only portion that we don't have?
I'm sorry?
Are the easements all that we lack?
No, no, no. Oh, what? No, I don't think we've got a signature on anybody yet. It's just been making phone calls saying we're coming to see you. No, you guys aren't, no, you're not holding this up by any, nobody, no. I know, I know the pastor, your pastor there could just talk to somebody about it.
But for the, for the overall project, getting those signatures from the property owners, that's all we need to do to start construction.
Well, no. Well, we, we have to get the easement signed. They go back to the highway department for their, for their easement expertise, if you will. I forgot what the, what the terminology that Jeremy, and then they approve them once they get them back. Then it goes out for bid.
Is there a timeline on that grant money that we've given?
Absolutely. The timeline is actually already passed, but due to, due to COVID and all the other things that are happening, that's, we're still in good graces with RDOT. I, I think it's pa- I mean, original date, I think, maybe.
We've got the grant.
But we're, we're good on the grant. There's no, we're, we're staying on top of that just as, just as we are the rest of it, so. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't personally look for construction. I don't think, and, I mean, I think August would be fantastic. I mean, uh, September would, might be, might need to be pushing a little bit, but hopefully we can get some concrete poured before winter.
Ralph had his hand up.
Yeah, I got a question. What, where are we at on the construction on the square there?
On the stepping stones?
Uh, no, the, um, the, um.
Remodel.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Remodel. Seems to, it seems to have stalled there.
Well, I, I can't really, I can't really speak to it. I know the contractors. I, I don't know. But they're, huh. Yeah, I think, I, I pretty much see somebody there every day. I think, I think it's slowed down from the big stuff. But they're, I, in fact, Theresa Burchett was just here the other day for a uh, water wastewater meeting and I, I asked her if the, uh, jackhammer had settled down and she said, not completely. So they're, they're still working on it. So what, what is that gonna be? Best my knowledge is, is just office space, right, Sonny?
It's got two sides. One of them is office space and the other one is, uh, they haven't decided what they're gonna do on the second side. They've talked about a restaurant or coffee shop of some kind, but one side is gonna be office.
Did you hear that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I, I talked to Lloyd Sumter, who's the, the contractor there and, and he told me that just like Sonny just said, that he was hoping to find uh, a restaurant that would go near AC's, on AC's side there, but.
Maybe with the door going into your office, possibly. That'd be handy, wouldn't it?
Yeah, right. Hey, hey, Mayor, do you still have those, uh, those uh, speed sign thingy jiggers that are solar powered, I guess? Is that what they are? Or battery powered?
We have, we have, yeah, one, one, oh, the speed limit. Yes, we do. Yes. You got a placement?
Uh, probably about a hundred yards from your house and about, um.
Is it a green truck?
Fifteen foot from my, uh, my driveway. That I guess, I don't, I don't know what the deal is the last few, last months, so I've been kinda giving, man, oh, man. We're zipping up through there and I didn't know if there's something we might, I mean.
On Denver?
Yeah, golly, it's becoming a racetrack. Them young kids, I guess they're doing practice or something. I don't know what they're doing, but woo, it's, uh, it's quite still. And I don't know if you noticed, we've had a lot of, a lot of people, like I say, walking up through there and then we got that elderly gentleman that's in the wheelchair and
Yep.
The motorized wheelchair that's up and down the sidewalk a lot and anyway, I just.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll touch base with Dennis tomorrow and we, we've not put those out in a while. You know, people kinda got used to them.
Right.
While and they, they, to be honest with you, from the reports that I would get from the chief there, if he's still in there, uh, I think people were having fun with it to see how fast they could go and get it registered on it, so.
I'm gonna see if you'll let me borrow you some spike strips.
Yep. I'll, uh, I'll give that message to, to, uh, Dennis and we probably have one out there tomorrow.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
And Mayor, I have a, a question on the, uh, uh, annexation. Are we, uh, where do we kinda stand on looking at, at annexation or maybe bringing, you know, Mr. Von Tunglin in or whatever, just talking about the possibility of that?
Yep. I'll let, I'll let Sonny speak on it, but I, I, here's what I do know, that uh, the judge has what we have or what we had or what we have, I guess, as far as the corridor. He has that in his possession. Uh, Mr. Von Tunglin, I think uh, had some, I don't know what you call it. Odd. If, if you remember, if, if, from what I know about it, Mr. Von Tunglin was the one to suggest to us that we looked at a corridor. And then now that we've done that, and I'm not wanna throw him under the bus, cause I, I think he's, he's a smart man and we need him here at some point. We, we did that. We turned it over to him or sent it to him. We sent it to the ju- or had the judge, yeah, we sent it to their, Sonny hand delivered it to the judge. We've not heard back from the judge, I don't think, really at all. Uh, other than, what do we, what do I do with this kinda sort of thing? And Mr. Von Tunglin may have changed his thoughts a little bit on, on the corridor. So we need to get him here. Absolutely, I think, and, and get with you, got, and have a study session on it and kinda get cranked back up and I mean, it's, it's vital to us to, to get something done. I don't know, you know, we've been talking about it for a long time. Sonny, you got something you wanna add to that or?
Well, I think, uh, Jim, when we talked to him originally, you know, the, the thing that they're most concerned about is, is the appearance of a land grab. And he said that, uh, if we do this and go in there with the attitude that this is to control the access to our city and to keep things from, uh, developing, uh, to the access of our city, like adult businesses and things like this, that we, we would have a good chance of getting this through. So now we went through Arkansas GIS and they looked at it and, and they've approved it. But they wanted the judge, again, to look at it and not sign off on it. But just to see if there are any issues, because it's going to eventually have to come back to him in a court where he has to rule on this before Arkansas GIS goes to the, through the long process of verifying each one of those parcels and the legal description. So that's what we're waiting on is the judge to look at it and say, as far as I can see on here, there's no issues. Send it back to Ar- Arkansas GIS and let them do their discovery part.
So round and round we go a little bit.
So I guess what we need to do is, is shake, shake the judge's tree and say, hey, remember us? You know, we're sitting down here waiting for an answer from you or, or guidance from you. And, uh, then go from there.
Hey, Sonny?
Yes.
Three or four months ago, we had, uh, you gave us a map that had, uh, I don't know, six or seven islands of land and that were not
Yeah.
city that I thought at that time was an emergency. I haven't heard any more about that, but.
Well, the, we just passed was the one that was an emergency. The, the next one will be Valley Loop. Uh, there are also, uh, the property, the Johnson property that's behind Jaeger's next to, uh, the Oaks. And then there's two parcels out on ninety-six. And so the, uh, I, I think you were not on the council at this time, but, but we went through an annexation where Valley Loop was included in it and we withdrew it. So I have the legal descriptions for Valley Loop. Uh, the issue that we might have there is, uh, you know, fire protection. Uh, because, uh, you know, we, we don't have a tanker truck. Uh, I, I don't know how we will address that. Uh, because when we annex, uh, normally when we annex, go out and annex, we have to provide fire and police. Since this is, is a, uh, an island within our city limits, I don't know if we're under those same constraints or not, because they will, uh, have the same, uh, abilities for our city services as, as anywhere else in, in town. So.
That word we used for that? Um, what's your word for those islands?
Enclave?
Enclave.
Yeah.
Um, not a Buick, just the enclave. Yeah. The, you know, if they're an enclave and, uh, you know, if it's not legal to have an enclave, then I guess we're wh- where does that fall? Maybe that's a handy.
And that, I think that's something that, uh, uh, a phone call to Mr. Von Tunglin to clear that up. The others, I, I, there's not gonna be any issue on it. Like I say, the other one is down behind Jaeger's. It's got, you know, there's no problem there. The other one's out on ninety-six. But you, you know as well as I do, when we say that we're gonna annex, uh, the Valley Loop, uh, there's gonna be an outcry. And so we wanna make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row.
Well, I, I feel like our, our fire department would, would have a quicker response. Yes, we, while we still, uh, you know, if it's a, a, a big, uh, structure fire, you know, uh, tanker trucks. So we would certainly have a, be a quicker response and, and have the initial knockdown probably on it, uh.
A hundred percent, I say. And I, I felt like that, but we initially looked at Valley Loop to begin with, but because of the outcry, uh, we decided not to go for it at that point. But I agree with you a hundred percent. If, if there was a fire at Valley Loop, you guys are gonna be there long before anybody else is there. And you're gonna have it under control before anybody else lays a hose. Uh, I, I, I think that's the same way in Shadow Lake or, or anywhere else around here. You guys respond faster than any of the rule. Uh, so, but I don't know the inner workings of the fire, uh, department like you guys do.
What? What? I, I guess the Valley Loop deal, I'm, I'm confused. And why can't we just vote it in and be done with it?
We can.
I mean, that's what, I mean, I, I'm, I, I, we've already been through that. I don't really need to hear all their opposition, it's just, cause it's gonna be the same thing. It's either vote them in and just get it over with and be done with it. I mean, in my opinion, that's my opinion. I, I mean, I may be.
I will have you in ordinance next month.
That works for me.
I'll have you in ordinance.
There's no reason, there's no reason to really sugarcoat that, because it's, it, it should've been done the last time. We just, we just, the, I, I don't know. I don't know why we didn't, to be honest with you, but I mean, we just need to do it and get it over with and clean, and have that cleaned up and then, and then start doing what we gotta do to fix our end of it.
We will start, we will start the legal proceedings. We'll, we'll post it. We'll send out notifications and, and, uh, get this going. Uh, I would imagine you would wanna do it on a three reading?
Yep.
Okay, so we can do that and, uh, uh, we can, we can run that out on, on, on all the properties and we can do it in ninety days and, and be done with it.
Right. I agree. I mean, I mean, and that's just my opinion. I mean, you know, the other guys, whatever, however y'all feel about it, but I think you just need, we just need to do it, get it over with and, and, and then lick our growing pains later. I mean, it's gonna, ain't nobody gonna be happy, bottom line. Y'all know that, you know, but.
Like the way you think.
Well, here's the deal. If you're worried about bringing in enclaves that were legally ours anyway, we might as well forget going up the corridor if we're afraid of these, this fight, cause we're gonna have a real fight up there.
Right. I agree.
I say rip the band.
Let's just get it ready, bring it to us. We vote them in and then we'll move on.
Good deal. Done.
Haven't there been enhancements to the, uh, you know, like the Bell Park Lift Station and some water line improvements in that area since that initial, uh, conversation about, you know, Bell, Bell, Valley Loop. I mean, the
I.
Our firefighting capability presumably.
Place of the, uh, placement of fire hydrants. You know, that's James Fork Water there. And, uh, we would have to run fire hydrants in there, you know, for fire protection only. And, uh, I forget how many, uh, fire hydrant Stewart said that he would, would like to see there, but it was six, nine, something of six, is that? And so, you know, that, that was a tremendous expense there, but uh, again, I agree with AC that, uh, uh, with those, with or without those, uh, we would be their first line of defense on a fire anyway.
Well, and on top of that though, is the water lines in the ground big enough for fires of hydrant to, you know?
Not from James Fork. We would have to run our own line.
The, the pump station at the Bell Park Road was put in because of that, at one given time, that subdivision was going in. That we end up having to put, we, we held up our end of the deal, then they bailed on us.
Yeah.
You take down our own Joplin Street, down behind the, the football field there. We have done some pump stuff there before. And I know that Tim and Greg and Daniel went into convulsions because those pump stations kick in. But that's what they're for. So I don't know how that could be, if those could be, if, you know, if we could use those for, for lines, you know, send our trail backs, our, send our walking trail backs right up to uh, Valley Loop. I mean, you know, if there was any way to, to put lines in, you know, what I'm saying? I mean, we already have easements through there. I don't, you know, I don't know how that works. I just, I'm just throwing this out there. But we got that High Dollar Pump Station right there that we put in that we paid for, that, that never really got used for what it was supposed to be used for, uh, from my understanding. And I may be, I may be incorrect on something.
We've got new interest in that seventy acres, uh, there between the, uh, the two subdivisions again too, so we're looking at that again.
Good deal. So I, I, so I think the fire, the fires, the fire side of it is, I'm not saying it's an easy fix, but it makes the most common sense fix for those, for those citizens out there. They don't realize what they're gonna gain, I can assure you. And I think if Chief Dawson's listening, I mean, I think they already pretty much answered calls out there for the county anyway, you know, and stuff. So, I mean, I don't think that's, like, they pass that going through Meadowbrook. So, I mean, it's, it's the, the, you know, having, providing police protection is just gonna be, I mean, it's just a, a turn of the blinker, pretty much.
I agree.
I would just be curious to know if, if the, uh, residents of the Valley Loop are already I would just be curious to know if, if the, uh, residents of the Valley Loop are already benefiting from our ISO two but because people don't really know. I mean, you know, uh, insurance riders might look at that, oh yeah, that's in the city limits, you know?
Sure.
And they're benefiting with that even, you know.
But I'm sure that some of them out there do take that, uh, uh, attitude. Well, that's got to be in the city limits. We've heard that from, you know, several places. But, uh, uh, like Lance says, you know, it's a, it's a problem, but it's fixable. And again, uh, we will start the legal process of notification and, and all this and, and so we can get this ball rolling.
Great.
I like the support.
All right. We'll have that for you or Sonny will. Anything else? Department heads or, or I'm sorry, council forum? Questions, comments? I do have one question for Mr. Terry. I don't know what you were reading earlier, but thanks for not sharing. That was.
That was a crackers. Barbeque sauce.
Okay, okay.
Sorry. Thank Charlotte for getting all this put together. It worked out well.
Absolutely. I think, I think it's worked really well tonight. A few little glitches with the microphone in the room, but I think everything else has worked well.
Hey, if I can figure it out, if I can figure it out, anybody can.
Yeah, right.
I, I do like the, the strapping they did, uh, around the square. That looks good.
Strapping around, oh yes, the part, the no parking area.
Yeah. All the parking spaces and, and everything like that. They, they.
Dennis informed me that for some reason that was originally done backwards and as you came upon that, even though it was striped, it was inviting you in. And I said, I don't need any more explanations. Just, but they did a good job on that. That looks good. Let me, let me brief you if I, if I may on some things that I had to say to the department heads this morning concerning, uh, COVID. I don't guess it's, it's hard not to have it. It's hard to have a meeting and not discuss, especially while we're on Zoom. But I gave specific instructions to departments in case you notice this or wonder about it. All the, all department heads were given specific instructions to instruct their employees, their personnel that masks are to be worn. It's not about, I don't want to, didn't want to get into a political discussion about it. It was just, it is what it is. So uh, seeing the situation we're in and, and I, I instructed all department heads to be very aware of that. They already were, but I've also asked uh, or instructed, if you will, that not more than one employee per vehicle for now. Uh, if mask or no mask, I just, you know, and that, that's going to cause a few more vehicles on the road, but I think we're okay. I think the, the, you know, Dennis had a good point as far as limb pickup. That's a little bit, maybe a little bit difficult, but what you will probably see or you should see is the limb, is the dump truck or the truck that they put the limbs on, followed by another pickup. We're not wasting, we're not doing it to waste. We're just doing it to make sure that everybody's as safe as we possibly can and, and, and do the best they can throughout the city. So just wanted to pass that on to you. Not everybody was thrilled with it, but I think it's just important that we, that we, that we abide by those, by those rules. Uh, obviously as you all know, uh, I think it's appropriate to mention to remember Rod and Jenny and your prayers uh, with their illness, uh, and, and, and our city. I mean, I think financially we're doing well. Very impressive, I think, how things are holding up financially and people are spending money in Greenwood. Uh, keep up, you know, keep your prayers up for everybody in the city too. So anything else? Oh, I want to thank, uh, Mrs. Captain America to be, being in the audience tonight. Thank you for coming with, with the times record. So, uh, and Mr. Edwards, I'll recognize you too. Is he, is Otis asleep?
He just woke up.
Otis, time to go home.
Anything else from you guys?
Otis made a motion to adjourn.
Did he? Okay. I am thoroughly entertaining a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion in a second. Thank you all very much.
Hey, Charlotte, how do I get out of this?
You throw it against the wall. No.
No.
Leave meeting. I'm kidding.
I've got a hammer.